Okay. Call the meeting to order any items from the public? Okay, if not, then entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, if there are no changes or modifications to the agenda, I'd like to approve it for Thursday, September the eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
All right, have a motion before, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Questions on the purchase order? Moving on, Mr. Davis, no internal budget revisions?
No, sir, none for your consideration this week.
Still too early, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have quite a few changes in status. We have a new hire recommendation received from Mike Line, Chief Court Marshal for Rebecca Boyer, as a part-time custodian with an hourly rate of seventeen dollars and eighty-two cents effective September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
That is the, the part-time custodian that the council authorized as part of this current year's budget. Person will work Friday, Saturday, Sundays.
Oh.
Primarily the twenty-four hour locations, Sheriff's Department more than anything because they bring up, they trek in a lot of dirt and muck on the weekends, so, so the hours are set for Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
And probably a little bit, they report center through, probably.
Yes, sir.
New hire recommendation, recommendation received from Tim Zaya, Director of Community Corrections for the following. Monty Callahan, as a part-time driver with a hourly rate of seventeen dollars and eighty-two cents effective September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Monet, Monet, missed my note there, Tracy. William Young, as a drug screen technician with an annual salary of forty-one thousand seven hundred and eight dollars effective September twentieth, twenty, twenty-two. Wanted to make sure you had a part of the read ahead there. Sarah Hoffman, as a J O T I P P case manager with an annual salary of fifty thousand six seventy-six effective September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Catherine Hubbard and Samantha Bianca, Bianco, as Q R T peer recovery coaches with an annual salary of forty-three thousand one thirty-five effective September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Change of status received from the Honorable Elaine Malt County Clerk for the following, effective September twelfth, Voter registration with a salary increase from forty-one four to fifty-four thousand. Lindsay Sigafus is going from voter software specialist one to voter software specialist two with a salary increase of thirty-six thousand to forty-one thousand. Melissa Ballinger is going from a part-time clerk to voters' software specialist one with a salary increase from fifteen dollars and fifty cents to per hour to thirty-three thousand dollars. Letter of resignation received from nine-one-one for Kristen Chapa effective August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Mr. President, just a point of correction, William Young has the same effective date as the other. A report center recommendation, the effective date is September twelfth, not September twenty.
Okay, from William Young.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions on, or statements on change of status? We have approval of minutes, August the twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. I was not, I didn't join until, in the meeting until eleven twenty a.m., so can we ask for, I'll ask for a motion with those meetings?
What are we gonna, you gonna vote on half of them?
I'm not gonna vote, well, yeah, that's a pretty good question there. Let's do, let's do a, a motion for the meeting up to eleven twenty.
Okay, there we go.
Well, if you insist, I move that we approve the minutes of August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two from nine-thirty to eleven-twenty.
I'll second that one.
Have a motion for, in a second.
Good idea.
Any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries and I'll sustain, what about the minutes from eleven-twenty till we?
We'll just leave that.
You wanna leave it there? Are you sure, you're not gonna be too confused?
I've got it straight.
All right, all right. Got that, Tracy?
Tracy can handle it.
Huh? Oh, no, I gotta ask for approval. Tracy, you okay with that? You got it?
It's not usually like this, Hallie. It's worse.
All right, we're gonna move on to, see, I can't get my. Can't get the thing to open up. There it is. All right, we're here today at nine-thirty a.m. and the next week we'll be here again on Thursday at nine-thirty a.m. Let's see, Boards and Commissions, we have Fire Board tonight, six-thirty p.m. here in the chamber. We have Farm and Land Protection tomorrow, Friday, the ninth, at twelve-thirty. Monday, the twelfth, we have two-thirty p.m. L E P C, five p.m. Order District, six p.m. Farm and Land Protection. On the fourteenth, on Wednesday, we have nine-thirty a.m. Development Authority, six p.m. Roundhouse Authority. Any changes or corrections to the Boards and Commissions? We have a bond release for sheet store number two-twenty R. B C P file number twenty-two oh one dash zero zero three tied to number two zero one eight dash two nine two. And number zero three three dash nine five, bond number zero one nine zero five two three four six. Engineering Department has made that recommendation, any questions for Brian?
Which sheets? Yes. Oh, okay. Well, that's, did they do, did they redo something out there?
That pond and stuff, didn't they?
Yep.
They are.
This is just a one for me being working through.
They are taking the sheets on Route forty-five through planning right now for major renovation, demo and renovation.
Oh, on Apple Harbor?
Yes, sir.
Huh. All right, you know, you're talking about that, the, the water on, most people don't see it, but the, all that water that's collected on Edmund Millard Boulevard. Goes under the ground and comes out back up and resurfaces over at the sewer district pond. Uh-huh. Yeah.
Put a dye in it, you'll see it.
All right. Ms. Meyer, anytime you want to interject and talk and ask us why we do stupid things, just feel free to just stop us and ask.
You might want to direct those questions to Doug.
Yeah.
That's why Doug does those things.
That's because I have the answer for everyone, that's why.
Oh, yeah. Eat your mouth and.
All right, need a motion for the agenda.
So moved to approve.
Motion been made, do we have a second?
Yes, sir, second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Good morning, Mr. Hess, you have a little bit of activity for us? You have two personal property tax exoneration due to taxpayer error.
I do, good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, those two, they, they got rid of the vehicles, but they did claim them all the time, so. Put them in the taxpayer error.
Yeah.
Total for those two was four hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Entertain a motion on the two personal property tax exoneration due to officer error.
Mr. President, I'm going to accept the two taxpayer error personal property taxes of the amount of four twenty-seven sixty-two.
Motion been up made, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone wants to say nay?
Nay.
All right, get the motion, let it be shown on the record, Ms. Tracy, that it got denied. Okay.
Thank you. Do you have next, we have, oh, we have this week, actually seven personal property office errors. We had to correct. There's two, seven comes up to one thousand one hundred and seventy dollars and thirteen cents.
All right, need a motion on seven personal property tax exoneration due to officer.
Any amount of one thousand one hundred and seventy dollars and thirteen cents.
Second.
Was that a motion?
That was.
And I'll second that.
Motion is seconded already.
He may well stop.
Okay.
Which, which scares me to death.
Yeah, it does. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries, you have nineteen real estate exonerations for reason of officer error. I do have a question on that one before we even start.
I think, yeah.
Do we date back that far? I didn't think we could go that far back.
Uh, yeah, it's kind of up to you guys to do, I, in other words.
I thought we.
I'll bring them to you.
We had that conversation.
That way, we just had that conversation, but.
Five years wasn't it the limit that we said or something?
Well, I don't think, as I remember, we actually agreed to five, but I think a lot of the assessors do use that five years as a, as a rule. Because the code says, you know, they give you one year to find a mistake, or it could be reasonably found. And the word reasonably, who knows how long you can go back there.
Well, Jeff, what's your opinion on that?
There's no reason you can't go back that far. The only one caveat that I've looked at, just to make sure it didn't apply, is the exoneration goes for up to the next two tax years. So I added this up and it was about twenty-two hundred dollars altogether for these one, these two.
So you're saying that, that those monies can only be used for the next two years?
No, it's just that if they, the exoneration amount is more than their taxes that they owe for those two years, then you have to give them a check.
I got you.
But based on what their taxes were this year and in the last few years, it looks like basically their second half this year and the first half this year. Exoneration.
Okay.
Maybe a few dollars on the second half this year, but it's pretty much almost.
The only one that we don't, that went back in time was the one out there in Heather.
Driving construction.
Exactly.
Yeah, out in Wheatland.
That was, uh.
It was out there past City Hospital.
Driver, uh.
It's Heather.
Isn't that Wheatland?
No, it's Heatherfield.
No, it's Heatherfield.
You thought it was Winfield.
Winfield, that's what it, Winfield, yeah.
That was twenty-two years.
I had to read that. Huh?
That was twenty-two years on that, if you remember.
Yeah.
It says incorrect acreage, how much was it off?
Well, what happened is, back, they built a new house, I think this was a lot that was split out in two thousand and six, I believe. And it, the acreage was point seven oh acres. And it got split in two lots, and their lot was point three six, I think. Well, it got changed on the legal description, when they did the legal description, when they, you know, transferred the deed and the split and all that. But it didn't get over to the real estate side where they changed it on camera, where, you know, calculated, it was calculating out that point seven oh acreage all those years. And you know, the legal description said three six, and when they got their bill, even if they saw that, they think, okay, there's no problem here. It just happened to show up, we traced that back, it's been at where it was, back in two thousand and six.
That's funny because you, since you said that, because, I mean, I got questions about a piece of property about two weeks ago about somebody missing like six acres. According to what's on our map, according to what he, his deed says, and they're trying to find.
I think that's a lot more common than what people think. The Cummings, you know, right across from Jane Drumsey.
Yep.
There, when they surveyed it, and I guess their disposal of the, probably giving it to the heirs was also considerable.
Huh. Yeah, all those old deeds, it says more or less.
Yeah.
Survey.
Probably fifty-five.
There's, there's a difference.
Well, and I think some of the old ones weren't surveyed when they subdivided them off, and that's why they just put more or less in because it is what it is, you know?
If you went from the tree to a rock, it would look. But anyway, those, those sixteen or whatever, like, it's only coming up to twenty-two hundred. The one you might want me to explain a little bit on that N F T C Family LLC, that was a farm, and it's five thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars. But what happened with that is, it didn't get, in other words, we have two different values on our land tables. If you don't get the farm break, you get one rate, you get the farm break, you get another really low rate. This got, didn't get keyed right, it has to be like three spots where you put in, this was a commercial car, and we had hard key, anything that's on a commercial car. So they keyed in one spot, then lowered rate, but it has to be keyed in two other spots that didn't get keyed. So it calculated out the, the higher rate.
Lower rate on the, on the agricultural exemption.
Yeah.
You got different rates, right?
Yeah, it's like three hundred and twenty-five dollars a week. So this didn't get to the lower rates, so that's the reason, that's, we had to correct that. That was only for one year this, this year.
Okay.
And those other two, I might just make a comment on those, there's no value change on for Larry Chillcoat. What happened is, they got an account number duplicated on this property and another property. And they went in to pay the bill, and the tax office said, we can't accept that check because that account number matches up to another one. So we got it worked out, and people paid the account number, the wrong account number, but they paid the bill. But we just needed to correct the account number on that, that's all.
All right, entertain a motion on nineteen real estate tax exoneration due to officer.
And you want a total on that?
Seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion for, in a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Good, thank you, go ahead.
All right. Is John over in office?
Yes, he is.
Have him to catch me at break if he can do that.
Me too.
All right. Mr. Barnhart, Board and Meeting Report.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. The only meeting I had this week was Telamon Community Action Board meeting. Fairly short meeting because they had a bunch of head meetings, we were wedged in there, so. Mostly just financial report and program updates and that kind of stuff, and it was fairly routine, and I'll let it go then.
All right. For, um, Mr. Delia.
I did not have any meeting, I was able to attend a, um, a visit with Shelley Moore Capito out at the airport the other day, and.
She must have had a full day, Senior Center, and toured downtown Martinville, which must have been very.
Torwart?
Tour downtown Martinville.
Oh, yeah, lighting project.
Actually, one of my employees was in there getting a haircut.
That during the day?
Yeah, down, I guess they went down, yeah, during the day. Went down, went down to Uncle Joe's, she, apparently she went down there.
Yeah.
But, no, it was, it was good for the airport to get an opportunity to have a conversation and do a small PowerPoint about, about some of the unfair treatments from FAA for civilian airports as opposed to commercial airports, and, and how the, how they totally disregard, although we have to maintain the whole runway. They totally disregard air traffic from military aircraft that lands and takes off on our runway, which is, which is something really should be changed. Because at some point, we're gonna have a lot of maintenance that has to be done on that runway, and the, the military doesn't pay to do the maintenance. You know, they give us a, a very, very small amount. Matter of fact, I think they're, we're the only one that actually gets a pay, paid for, here you go, the other airports in the state, they have military on them, don't even get anything for it.
Lot of the, yeah, the de-removerization, I think, is taken care of by the military side, and that's about it.
Well, and they provide a service, I mean, they provide fire service out there. The problem with that is they, they provide fire service, and I think they have an M O U don't, to do that in the county too, don't they? But, but we can't rely on their fire service if we were gonna get commercial aircraft in here. So we would still have to have our own fire service out there.
Oh, is that right?
If we're gonna get commercial aircraft, and.
They know that.
Yeah, and that's a, so.
They have to be on the premises.
Uh, yeah, there's a problem with that because they, they credit us, or, or use that as a credit towards using the airport, that they provide fire service. But they're really not going to provide fire service if we go to commercial because it's a requirement that we have to have full-time fire service. Or we do, but we don't, you know?
Yeah, that would be a terrible duplication of services, but it could be, it could be fixed using Station Twenty-nine in the future if that come about. We just, we just have to work through getting.
Cut a hole through the fence.
I'll take it, oh, but. We'll go after that, it's not up to me.
Yeah, yeah.
And we got good reviews on the Senior Center, very pleasant, yeah.
Yeah.
People in the Senior Centers remarking him, perfect, how he had the best Senior Center you've ever attended, and stuff like that.
Well, I think we have the best one in the state, without a doubt.
Well, he was speaking interesting.
Yeah, and that may be, yeah, that may be, I, I know that we've spent a good bit of money on that facility.
Yeah, it is a nice facility. We pay for it, so.
Mr. Wiger.
I did not have any meetings. Pass me.
Mr. Gokena.
Yes, sir, on Friday, I was a guest on W R N R radio, which was, you know, always, always a good, good half hour.
Yeah.
Always, always a good half hour to spend with them. All good. After that, Mr. Davis, the sheriff, Dr. Branch, and I met with the, to discuss the S R O, try to get this resolved. And hopefully, hopefully, Dr. Branch will come back, you know, with some different figures that, that we had discussed. So that's still kind of not resolved yet. On Tuesday, had a sewer board meeting, the Jerestown Pump Station is ready for testing. All the work, you know, really is complete with the exception of that, and once it's completed, they will start on the demolition of that treatment plant that's right there at the corner of Fifty-One and Home Song. The Cemetery Road Project is complete, they're very satisfied with Snyder Environmental's quick work there of getting that completed. And they're working on replacement of several pump stations on Route Nine West to be able to get in compliance with their consent decree. So they're working, working on that. Also, I had to leave that meeting to go to the Planning Commission, which was a rather busy evening, had seven public hearings. Probably the most notable as far as size of the project was. Probably the most notable as far as size of the project was a project called Willow Glen, which is off of Route Fifty-One behind the Dollar General for a hundred seventy-nine town home community. Really filling that pay field up as I do it and most people in Google know that's a pay field. And then yesterday, Executive Board with the Development Authority met to discuss the executive director's search. So that's, that's all online. They've had twenty-two applicants, it's been narrowed down to five. And there's a questionnaire to mail out and then interviews are actually set up for the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth.
Okay. Now, I didn't have any normal board and commission meetings, but on Thursday at four o'clock, I did go out to the airport, met with Region Nine, Jim Olet from the Water District, Duncan Harding, Darrell Coles, myself, and Nick Deal was there on the water infrastructure projects that the Water District is working on, Jim, which is a hundred twenty-seven billion dollars. The Pike Side Water Project is slightly under twelve million. And they were asking the, the state to pitch in fifty percent, probably slightly under six million dollars. Part of that then would, they would come back and ask in the county for ARPA money for one point, I think that's the one for one point six million dollars. And then the Water District would go out and borrow money for the remainder of the match. So it's a fifty-fifty match. I'm being told by two different resources that yesterday that got approved. And at the funding levels that was being asked, so.
You say from the state?
From the state.
Okay.
Yeah. The state wanted to, for us to throw, for the county council to be able to put some ARPA money into it. I think this one's requiring one point six and the next one, which is the river plant, at a million dollars, but that's a much bigger price tag. I think that, if my memory serves me correctly, and I must have left my paperwork somewhere else, I think that one might be a twenty-four million dollar project. Which is on the agenda for next month, I believe. So it seems like it's a pretty good, yep, next month for the Potomac River Plant Project. So.
We did send a letter of support.
Right.
Again, for the Potomac River Plant Expansion and upgrades.
Yeah.
That was given to Jim week before last.
Yeah. So the, the bad news is that the total project is a hundred twenty-seven million dollars. And, you know, that should be nice that the state would match fifty percent, but that's sixty million dollars, two hundred and fifty million dollars that they got in the pool of money to, to help people out. So I'm sure it won't happen at that level. We've never, I don't think it was ever meant for that to happen, but anyway, a good start.
Just, just so the council is aware, as you know, we've had ongoing discussions about some projects and how we're going to fund it. Today you have, I think, your final interview for some supplemental funding. And I have it on your agenda, just listed as follow-up discussion regarding supplemental funding for today. The only thing I ask today is that you give me any additions that you may want to those discussions. For example, the two point five million dollars in ARPA funding for the sewer department. The consensus of the county is you want at least that put on the list for discussion and we're, you tell them next week we'll do that. Also, once Mr. Tomlin gets done, Tobin gets done today, if you want any of that added. Next week, we have a very, very light agenda by design because I've set aside about two hours for us to sit down and, and I'll have Tracy Gilliams here and we'll go through all the projects and potential funding sources, what we've committed to. And then at that point, I'll ask the council to begin discussions on prioritizing some of, some of the projects. I think it's not next week, but the week after, we will open bids on the financing. There's quite a bit of interest. Put the RFP out there for about twenty million dollars of borrowing. Quite a bit, bit of interest in that. We've been dealing with, with emails and telephone calls all week, the various lending institutions that are interested in that. So won't have a lot of discussion today on the, on the projects, but if it's consensus of the council, I will add the two point five million dollars, two point six million dollars in ARPA funding because we do have, we have a little bit more than four million. We have actually four point eight million dollars of uncommitted ARPA funding that we could use towards that if the council sort of chooses.
I'd like to go a little more into detail what that, what those two projects are, what those two projects, I mean, I get the plant expansion and it's supposed to get us up to what, ten million?
Jim, Jim has agreed, Jim Olet, Olet has agreed to come in next week as part of that discussion and be with you and answering questions.
Well, we've got, we've got a, we had a PowerPoint that they gave us. They showed what projects and what the scope is.
That's what it is.
Yeah, but what part of that is? Is it, is it the whole part out to, are we talking about, is that the, what did you say the amount was? Seven million?
Twelve million.
Twelve million?
Slightly under twelve million.
So then does that include the, the water tower?
I don't think it does.
That water tower alone's five million.
Yeah, that's, doesn't include that.
And it doesn't include getting on the other side of the interstate?
I don't believe, but he handed out that packet again on that power plant and I'm sorry I didn't bring it.
Well, I thought, I thought that phase of it, I thought that phase of it needed that, that tower for pressure.
I'm not.
I thought that was the conversation that we had in that was to, to raise the pressure for that whole Taylor Station area.
What we can do is, if we could, we could set him up as being part of that conversation when we get to that later in our agenda.
Okay.
All right. Board and commission vacant.
No, there was one thing. Councilperson Gokenaer and I, we both attended the Labor Day Breakfast out at the park. It was for the weather that we had, it was very well attended. It's always a good venue.
Sorry, I missed it. We were out of town. We were out of town.
My mom was out of town on Labor Day Memorial Day. All right, board and commission vacancies. Any activity there?
Tracy, excuse me, I'm sorry. Have letters been sent out for reappointments on the folks on the LIPC?
All right, Jim, honorary county councilperson.
Yeah, this is a, this is something we haven't done for quite a while and I would like for Hallie Meyer to step up here. We have a certificate here for honorary councilperson. And this was just put on me here by, by the president and I have to swear you in. I've been sworn out, but I've never sworn anybody in, so.
And you don't have a teaching.
And I don't, I do not. And so I'm just going to ask you to raise your right hand and say, I do promise and vow to uphold the constitution of the state of West Virginia.
I do promise and vow to uphold the constitution of the state of West Virginia.
And the United States.
And the United States.
And I'm going to pull this one from the, from the United States and to defend it from all enemies.
And to defend it from all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you so much. And we would like to have you, tell us a little bit here in the audience about what you would, what you're going to be doing here pretty soon after graduation and what school you're from.
I'm a senior at Hedgesville High School. I'm currently also enrolled at Shepherd University. So I go there and I'm taking all of my gen ed classes. I currently plan on majoring in political science with a minor in pre-law, either at Shepherd or any other school that offers me the most scholarship money. So that's what I plan to do in my future and I'm very excited to be here.
Well, again, thank you so much for coming in. Good to have a councilperson.
Thank you.
Got all you from memory?
That was pretty good.
Was that pretty good?
You did forget to have her say, state her name. I think you're supposed to state.
I get well.
But I'm not going to.
Did you state your name?
I think I just heard he's doing the next one.
Yeah, I think I just heard he's doing the next one, yeah.
All right. Mr. Davis, let's go ahead and do the recommendation to reject the Dunn Building bid. Does that sound okay?
Yes, sir, whatever you want. As the council is aware, on Thursday, August fourth, twenty-twenty-two, bids for the addition and renovation to the Dunn Building were publicly open and read in the public record. We only received one bid prior to the deadline and that was from Cooper Building Services out Frederick, Maryland, in the amount of nine million, seventy-six thousand dollars. If you will recall, this has been a, a project that we actually started in December twenty-twenty. Went through design of the renovations, the bump out for the ambulance authority in the area where the fireboard is now, creating an, an awning area, redesigning the front to the Dunn Building, coming in off of Stevens Street so that eventually we could have a walkway that comes across from a future parking deck. And, and the intent is to get all the high-traffic departments on the first floor, move the county clerk's office down here, which would, which would free up one hundred West King Street for future use and, and just generally improve the flow of, of traffic through this building. It is eligible for ARPA funding. We did set aside some ARPA funding in the amount of about seven million dollars for, for this project. We did have, and we had actually Crabtree, Roarball and Associates had provided us with an estimated cost of the project in the spring of this year and their estimate, estimate was six point five million dollars. We had eight contractors that had picked up the plans for the project and were attended the pre-bid conference that was held on Friday, July fifteenth. Interested contractors included McGinnis General Contractors, Breckville and Hellman Construction out of Chambersburg, W. Harley Miller, Myers Building Systems, Cooper Building Services, Wolf Creek Contracting, which had done the renovations to five-twenty, South Raleigh Street, and Callas Contracting, which we had worked with before, when we added the seventy-two-hundred square foot addition to eight of two. We contacted several of the contractors after we opened bids at the direction of the building committee. They stated that they were interested in the project, that did not have enough time to align the subcontractors. They did not bid because the RFP had too many ambiguities and the timing was not right that they were involved in two or three larger projects and had it happen later in the summer, early fall, late September, October, that they probably would have submitted a bid. As the council's aware, we have seen some shifting in the economy. We know that some of the contractors may now have some, some extra capacity that they wouldn't have had earlier in the summer. We also know that in some instances, not all instances, but some, the cost of building materials have, have gone down a little bit. Therefore, in accordance with the conditions outlined in the request for proposal, I'm respectfully recommending to the council that we reject the bid submitted by Cooper Building Services because it is significantly over budget and moving forward would not be in the best interest of the county. And upon rejection of the bid, we will work with Crabtree, Roarball, refine the specification and rebid the project. Time is not of the essence for this, for this building.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Davis on that one?
What do you mean refine?
Well, some of the contractors said that the specifications where it was ambiguous in some areas, Gary and I have identified probably two million dollars worth of expenses that was in the Cooper proposal that, working with the vendors that we currently are working with on upgrades to the lighting and the air conditioning mechanical systems in the judicial center.
And the sheriff's.
In the sheriff's department that we, we could probably, we'd probably do better. So Gary and I and Crabtree will sit down, refine some of those areas, remove some of the gray areas that have been identified and put it out for rebid, hopefully within the next four to six weeks.
Any parts of it that we can do ourselves?
We, we have actually started doing some of the work ourselves. For example, the, I call it the technology room that, that houses all of our servers in this building. We had to, we had to physically move those before we could start some of the construction. That work has been done. In fact, Boland should be here, I think, next week to, to help us move that equipment. So we're doing what we can do. Our, our employees have been renovating the extension services area out in seven fifty Baltimore Street. Drywall is up. I have the proposals for flooring on, on my desk so that we can award flooring and the, the air conditioning heating units that we need have been ordered and we should have those shorted.
Once the roofing.
The, the steel and all the insulation is, is on site. In fact, it's in storage. There's, there's a clip that they need, that these clips have been in order since July. They were supposed to be in in August and there's, they're still not, still not in.
All right, need a motion to, to take Mr. Davis's recommendation to reject the bid on the Dunn Building.
Over. Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. All right. It is ten fifteen and it looks like the next agenda item that we have is a proclamation in recognition of the retirement of Burke County Development Authority Executive Director Sandy Hamilton. And Sandy, you just walked in. It's always good to see you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see you.
Going well?
Dressed in fall colors.
It's fall, all this.
I was just listening on the radio back in the older days and it was like, we didn't wear white after that.
No, I don't.
You don't?
No.
But that's not, they say that's a myth now.
Well, it's a myth, I still follow.
Not in our house.
Unless it's white wool. I do have a white wool suit, but.
My wife had to ride in my truck last.
It's not white, is it? Because she can't ride in it.
Well, she, she had white on and she's like, you gotta put something down on that seat because this is the last day I can wear white and so I'm wearing white.
There you go. There you go. We're on the same line.
I wear white in the winter times, I can blend with the snow.
It does, it doesn't count, it doesn't count for you.
Well, Sandy, it's good to see you and, and, you know, it's, sometimes we, we feel it's time to move on and enjoy better things in our life like grandchildren, right?
Yeah, I was thinking, yeah, I have a T-shirt that says if I'd known grandchildren were this much fun, I'd have had them first.
Right, right.
So I'm thinking now I need to get a T-shirt that says if I'd known retirement was this relaxing, I would have done it first.
It is nice and, you don't know yet, but we will.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that.
Um, yeah. But, yeah, it's, it's, it's a scary time. I think you and I talk about that, you know, are you?
Whether you're working or not, it's a scary time.
Right. And what are you going to do with your spare time when we, when we work from day to day to dark, six or seven days a week? And so, you know, I have a discussion with my wife quite often, but.
About the R-word.
Hi.
About the R-word and.
Yeah.
You have, introducing yourself to her.
Yeah. Yeah, so got a proclamation to read and to recognize you and your, your hard work and stuff. So basically it says, whereas Sandy Hamilton, County, Burke County Development Authority on October the first, two thousand thirteen, as the business program manager, whereas on September the fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, Sandy became the executive director of the West Development Authority. And whereas. And whereas the board knew that Sandy's love and passion for the Burke County referring new vision to Burke County, and with new vision comes new business. And whereas Sandy has traveled abroad to bring new businesses, large and small, to Burke County, some of which are chloro, the expansion of P&amp;G and its, and Macy's, and the purchase of so many properties and projects under contract currently, um, in the development stages. And whereas Sandy remains passionate about the values of, of, uh, values of small business in Burke County and patronize them in her daily routine. And whereas Sandy had been an absolute asset to Burke County Development Authority and the citizens of Burke County, bringing businesses and jobs to the community. And whereas on September 1st, 2022, Sandy retired as executive director of Burke County Development Authority, now therefore be it resolved that the Burke County Council, thanks Sandy for both years of service to Burke County and its citizens, and wish her the best of luck in her retirement adopted this eighth day of September, uh, 2022.
I appreciate that.
Can I say just a couple words?
Absolutely.
Just a couple.
I would expect anything else.
Thank you, Sandy. Um, and thank you all. I appreciate everyone that's here, and I appreciate certainly, uh, the proclamation and the well wishes. Um, I am going to keep it brief, but it occurred to me, um, and I've been reading in First Samuel. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about, just briefly, about David and Goliath. And I think often, over the last ten, twenty, thirty years of my work life, I felt like David. But then it occurred to me that, um, often, as a parent, as a person, I, uh, have taught that story incorrectly, that the victory wasn't David's, the victory was the Lord's. So if I've done anything that's been successful and that has benefited Berkeley County and the citizens, it's the Lord's victory, it's not mine. Where I failed, that was all me. So along that line, and keeping it brief, I'm gonna say that if those brownies are delicious that I baked this morning, that's the Lord. And if they're a little hard, it's because Sandy used her new pan and might have overbaked them, and that's all me. But, uh, I, I thank you, and I appreciate you, and, uh, I know you're gonna continue to go on and do great work, but I never want to lose sight that it's not me. It's the Lord first, and then it's our community working together to accomplish our common goals. So appreciate each one of you, and thank you, and wish you well as well.
Anyone else that want to say anything at this time?
Well, I've known Sandy, what, since 2010?
Yes.
We met on a migrant camp.
Was you working?
He was, I was too.
Yeah.
And he wasn't living there, though.
That's what I'm saying.
Close, but no. And actually, I've known certain members of her family from 1972. Oh, and, uh, the Gladden family, and, you know, good people and honest people, and, you know, so we kind of go way back.
We do.
And, uh.
I guess you worked with Dorothy.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Veronica.
And, uh, of course, you Veronica and all, all the other Gladden, oh, oh, your cousins. And, you know, good family, and Sandy is a good person, and, uh, we've always, you know, had a good relationship and continue to have a good relationship. I don't know how you're going to deal with your membership on various boards and commissions. I don't know if that's, you know, going to be ongoing or not. I hope so, uh, because you add a lot.
Thank you.
You know, and, uh, you know, I wish you well in retirement, and if you need any tips, call me.
Thank you. And ask for Linda.
Yes. Yeah, I retired first, and then when Linda retired, I thought, oh my God, you know, doubt she's gonna be home, and she wasn't, so, you know.
Wait a second, let me make that phone call.
You don't have to. He's on, he's on.
And, you know, it's, it's, it's going surprisingly well, so, you know, you have nothing but to look forward to the times that you have to come.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Yep.
Well, I'm not near as long-winded as he is, but I, I'll thank you for, you know, working together with you over the past several years at the Development Authority. Uh, it has been a pleasure, and it's, uh, it's, uh, obviously, you do have a passion for your community. I spoke to somebody the other day that, uh, is part of this, uh, um, business group that.
The social collective?
Yeah, that you're working with, uh, um, and, uh, and they were, they were concerned, uh, if the Development Authority was going to continue on and, and continue the support that they were doing, and, uh, I did let the lady know that that was something that we voted on, so that should, should continue. Who's gonna do it, I don't know, but, um, but, uh, um, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
And hopefully you'll enjoy your retirement and, and your grandchildren.
Even more than ever.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sandy, thank you so much for all that you've done for this county. It is remarkable, and, uh, I didn't know until we were talking one day that, uh, we kind of grew up together in different areas of Pike Side.
We did. Yeah, I started school at Pike Side Elementary.
Yeah, that's where I was.
Lived on the Prater Farm.
Yeah, yeah, I was there. I went first, second, and third.
Hung out in Simpson Darby's Garage.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that was, that was.
She hung with the good kids.
Until I got here. And then it all went downhill, you know?
I, I guess in this instance, it's a good thing I wasn't memorable till I brought it to your attention, right?
Well, you know, it, it was, and, uh, you know, when, and you never know how people are connected until you start talking. And, uh, that was, that was neat to reminisce that day.
It is.
Pike Side has really changed. I, you know, I used to say it was, you know, the, the south of the county, and, um, it's, it's now it's greater downtown. I mean, it's just, uh, taking on a whole new, uh, growth of its own, and, and it's, it's been a great place to live for me all my life, so. Uh, as well as Berkeley County, so. But again, thank you for all that you've done. Greatly appreciate it.
I know you've got some history there.
Please don't tell all.
No, lips are sealed. You got the check in the mail to me, though, right?
You know, obviously. He's writing it now, yeah. Obviously, uh, your, your roots are deep, and, and a lot of us really, uh, appreciate that, you know? I've, I didn't know you until we started, uh, the seventh grade at Musman High School.
Couple years ago.
Just, it was just a couple, and, uh, and then a couple more, but, you know, one thing that's never changed about you has, has been your, your disposition, your smile, your, um, friendliness towards people. I've never, ever heard you say one bad thing about anybody, and I'm sure through life, you've had many opportunities, but you've always, uh, chose the high road. And, uh, but your professionalism in your, in your job, your integrity in your job, your love for what you did, and, and for your job, what you did, because that's part of your past, but, um, you, you are a tremendous asset to this county, and just knowing that you knew where to take people when they came to you with a problem, or they came to you with a project. You had that relationship already established. You had a first-name relationship with all the key people that you needed to get your folks in front of, and that has to be tremendously valuable to you, uh, and the next person that comes behind you to be able to have that relationship with folks. That, you know, when I see Sandy's, uh, name on the phone, I'm, I'm thinking a good thing, you know? I want to thank you for not leaving me in the airport, even though some people tried. You, you had the opportunity.
Some people in the room tried.
I want to thank you for getting us out of the airport in timely manner before we got flooded in.
That rain dance works every time.
Yeah.
But, but thank you for your friendship above all, and, uh, I appreciate you, you know, for a long time.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Thank you, and we'll get this proclamation to you here shortly, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're, we're gonna take a photo, though, if you don't mind. Here, we're gonna take a break, okay? All right, so, um, let's take a break for, uh, take a photo.
We're back in session and need to back up and ask for a motion on the proclamation to recognize the retirement of Sandy Hamilton. We have a motion on the floor in a second and any discussion on that? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Next on our agenda is a board and commission interview with Matthew Howard, a candidate for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Matthew? Good morning, sir. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to be here. Well, for this position, I think you need to have two things, I believe. Well, three. First, I'm a native, and that helps. I've been here all my life, although I've visited 40 countries and 46 states I've been around. But I think you have to understand the history of Berkeley County. And for those who don't know me, just a little bit of my background is I teach American Indian burial practices studies at Shepherd University. I'm a field researcher here in Berkeley County, published author of several books on history, American Indian history. Currently, I'm volunteering at the Morgan Cabin where we have some exciting projects going on there. So I have a very deep appreciation for Berkeley County history. My mom's family came here in the 1830s, so it definitely goes way back. I think the second thing is that to do something like this, I really believe you have to first, you really have to love the county. If you're in the business of promoting it and sending out to the world what's great about Berkeley County, I really feel you have to love doing it. And I have a friend in Northern Virginia who often teases me, he said, "You should be governor of West Virginia." All you do is talk about us moving to West Virginia and how great it is there, Berkeley County this, Berkeley County that. Guilty as charged. I do show my pride when I go out and about. For me, I think those several things, I think, are important and it's a little bit of my background.
I think the secret is out, you know, how great West Virginia is, not only Berkeley County but the whole state. And I think, especially with some recent events, that you're going to see a lot of people appreciate West Virginia more than what they ever had before.
I totally agree, sir. It's been a well-kept secret until the last 10 years, but I really, in some part to me, want the county to go back to the way it was when I was a Muslim in the 80s. However, that's not realistic.
The interesting thing about that, Matthew, is that people look at Berkeley County, as you stated, it's grown a lot in the last 10 years, and really, it hasn't grown any faster percentage-wise over the last 20 to 25 years. It's grown by numbers, but not by percentage. And it will always do that. You're compounding those numbers. So somebody like me, I look back and say, okay, where was it, you know, 2000 to 2010? And percentage, and I think actually to 1990 to 2000 was about the same percentage. It's just that the numbers are growing. All right, Mr. Barnhart, do you have any questions?
Well, I'm curious, what four, six states you haven't been to?
There's two in New England, and I haven't been to Alaska or Hawaii yet.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm sure you'll remedy that situation.
I hope so. I'm a well-traveled hillbilly, so I've been very fortunate to see the world.
Well, your experience in travel, how do you think you can move that to the CBD? Because that's what you're applying for.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, many instances, for example, you know, my lovely wife who's here supporting me today is from Indonesia, and we've been in her country many times. And we hear country roads, the song, all over the world. I've been in Europe, I've heard it played there. And I even heard some Australians singing it one day, and they changed it to "West Australia." I didn't know whether to go slug them or shake their hand. You know, because again, it's a credit to West Virginia, even though it's our state. It, you know, so yeah, I think the experience that I've gained in being to 40 countries and multiple continents and being in the military in Afghanistan and such, I think it's all going to help me, you know, draw on that if needed.
Mr. Valier?
I want to thank you for applying. We definitely have a couple of spots on that board that need to be filled. I think it's an asset to have somebody with not only your past, but have the history involved.
Thank you, sir.
The, you know, and maybe, you know, maybe the thought process of traveling abroad, it gives you another look at, you know, how we can market our area. And, you know, I've said all the time that, you know, we should have billboards up down, you know, down in DC about, you know, come here for the weekend and enjoy. you know, down in DC about, you know, come here for the weekend and enjoy, you know, some of the things that we have. And it's continuing to grow, that's for sure, the assets that we have to draw that group of people. So marketing. The meetings, I think, are currently, I think it's the fourth Wednesday of every month at like, I think it's one o'clock, fourth Wednesday, yeah, fourth Wednesday of the month, one o'clock. Is that right, Tracey? Is that something that you're able to attend?
Yes, I, my work schedule is very flexible. I won't have a problem being off of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselperson, please, President Wafer. Matthew, good to have you in here again.
Thank you.
And I've been following you on some of your finds and accomplishments on the Facebook page at the Morgan Cabin and what you, the great work you've all been doing up there.
Thank you.
You know, like you, I consider myself a traveling hillbilly, and what I, one thing I try to do is not mimic what somebody else is doing in their area, but see what they're doing. And, you know, for what we've got going on in Berkeley County, it's not any different than, you know, some of the more touristy cities that you have up and down the East Coast. And except for we've got a little bit of industrial going on, but now comes a time that the CBB can really, you know, shine this wonderful Eastern panhandle. And I'm just curious as to, you know, what you, I mean, I know that they do certain things, but do you have any thoughts about what else you could enhance it with? I mean, because Dan did mention, you know, billboards will be an awesome thing to have away from here, because you see everybody's advertising here, especially for promoting jobs in other states. Because they know that we train the best officers, we train the best paramedics and teachers, and other cities are looking for them, and we gotta get them to stay here and get them to come here. So that was just my only question.
You know, having so little knowledge to date of how the procedures work and everything with CBB and kind of just coming in and just saying, hey, I'd like to serve, you know, that's why I'm here, I like to serve my county, my state. I really don't see a lot of Berkeley County being promoted anywhere. And I travel Northern Virginia a lot, Pennsylvania, do something, let me start there.
Yeah.
You know, do something. And then from there, build on, I think working directly with specific businesses that favor the tourism industry would be good to kind of network that and then promote that out through the region, if you will. To me, that's a start, but I would like just to see something done. I would love to drive on Route 28 in Northern Virginia and see a billboard, you know, promoting Berkeley County, because we're only an hour away.
Right.
Something like that, I think, is the beginnings of what I have in my mind, but again, forgive me, without having all the procedures and everything, the budget, budget, of course, is a big deal, you know. Once I get in there, I'll have a lot better idea.
Good.
If so, chosen.
Sure, thank you. Counselperson, broken in?
Yes, sir, Matt. I know that you have a tremendous amount of knowledge on history and all the different agencies in the county that have, you know, a love for history and collection and such. So I would think with the amount of people, especially in this region or even in this country, that really want to dive deep into our Civil War history, our Native American history, you know, I think that you'll be a perfect person to pull all those things together to be a part of that board. And of course, being the last one here to, other Mr. Copeland here, to ask questions, there's three of them that have already taken my questions that I had written down. But I just, the tourism, you know, and I know that the state of West Virginia alone is really working on trying to get tourism here, because zoo dollars are good dollars. And we are proud of our history, you know, we've got a lot of Civil War history here, you know, we've got...
It was a start.
The Roundhouse, you know, I mean, there's a lot of beautiful structures here for people to come and see, and I don't know that people know about them. So we need to, they need to be promoted.
I totally agree, Eddie. There's, for example, the Falling Waters Battlefield after the Battle of Gettysburg. That land is land that could be promoted, you know, that site, I should say, is a better way to say it. Very few people in Berkeley County are aware of it, let alone the region, so, but it was a very important part of the retreat of General Lee's army. So there's a lot of different sites, the Buckle Hill Mill, for example, has been there forever, and it's always brought, you know, a lot of attention, a lot of interest with the Giles family. And Morgan Cabin, of course, is, I think, you know, we've got our Fall Festival coming up, and our haunted Morgan Cabin coming up, we're really trying to gear up. And let's not also forget, we get a lot of people coming from Morgantown East. We have a lot of people coming from west to east Berkeley County as well. So while the population is to the east, I don't think we can lose sight of also our colleagues and friends to the west. Because, for example, with the Morgan Cabin, a lot of the Morgans live in Fairmont, in Morgantown, and they come to Berkeley County just for the Morgan Cabin to date, they spend their money in hotels and they eat at our restaurants, and so that's also something that we need to explore. Thank you, Matt.
Well, I am the last person, so, but anyway, Matthew, it seems like you've done a lot of traveling, which to me, that means that you have a lot of things that you have seen that you probably don't see in Berkeley County.
Yeah.
Right? So it says experience, twenty-five years, so my question would have been, would be twenty-five years' experience of traveling to bring, I need to know, what do you mean by twenty-five years of experience?
Well, it's a broad question as to what the exact, you know, there's many things that I've done over a longer period, starting back in the military, you know, the Navy back in nineteen eighty-eight, where Uncle Sam took me to nineteen countries. So I saw a lot in the Mediterranean and the Middle East, you know. But the twenty-five years is basically, I'll be honest, it's kind of a round estimate of the number of amount of years that I've been traveling, you know, throughout my adult life. Most of my formative years, we actually lived in five states. So I got a lot of traveling, you know, Ohio, Florida, Maryland, West Virginia, and so forth. But, yeah, I mean, so much of the twenty-five years that I've traveled, you know, has opened my eyes to how the world sees things and not just how we see things as Americans or as West Virginians. For example, I have a great love of the Indonesian culture, my wife's from, and they do some amazing things in Bali that we can emulate, you know, that I believe could be successful.
And that's an interesting statement, because my, I haven't done much travel, right? So I have very little experience of cultures in other countries. That would be a pretty neat thing of bringing different cultures of different countries for a weekend event, you know? But anyway, I like a lot of your response to some of the questions, or to the questions, I should say. You know, I'm one of those ones that always says, you know, I can't make changes from the outside, I gotta get inside and see how it works, and you said that.
Yeah.
And this is the second interview you've given us that I know of, and both times are pretty impressive, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time, thank you for your travels, thank you for coming back to Berkeley County, and hopefully we can make it a better place.
So you've actually left one council member out of this whole conversation?
Yes, honorary councilperson. I'm getting there. I didn't want to put her before you.
Okay, well, you said you were last, so I thought you were ready to wrap it up.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I think quite one of the central ideas of the conversation of trying to keep people in Berkeley County, because I know that's a big discussion thing and people my age, everyone wants to get out and leave, but I think it's more crucial to keep people here rather than trying to promote Berkeley County in places like Northern Virginia, because people who grew up here and already know how great it is, I think that should be your target audience, but...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree.
So what kind of advice could you give on, if he's trying to get on the CBB, what kind of advice can you give him to keep people like you?
What's missing in Berkeley County that would keep young adults here?
I think, I think what's missing is almost the marketing and advertising. Just kind of to play along to that, we talked about Morgantown a lot, and people here, they either went to college specifically, they, a lot of people want to go to Morgantown or the bigger cities, but I think we should promote Martinsburg as less of a suburban area, or I mean, more of a suburban area and less of a rural area, because I think that's what a lot of people my age see it, they just see the farmland and wish that's beautiful. And we love West Virginia, its mountains and whatnot, but I think we should kind of promote our city more so as to show that we have the best of both worlds, we have everything that you possibly want. And I think bringing in more jobs and industries would definitely incentivize students to stay here, and maybe scholarship money specifically to keep students here.
The one thing we're working on, and we have a quality of life fund that we're trying to do things to attract, and I should say, retain people like yourself to stay in Berkeley County. And I think it's one thing that we always talk about, we're all older people here, right? And we can't think and keep the county as we've seen it, right? We gotta start looking through your eyes and saying, this is what we need to do, right? So it's a good thing you're in political science, you can, you know, take over one day, soon.
Yeah, Doug, she mentioned one thing, and I was very fortunate growing up, being able to do family vacations. And whenever I went somewhere that I really liked, I thought, man, this'd be a great place to live. And then as the older I got, I realized I don't want to work where I vacation, because then it becomes a place of work, and you're not going to be happy the same way.
Right.
So I always wanted to come back home, and then I looked forward to taking that next trip again. And I think that was a little bit of the mindset growing up, you know, you know, the wonderful places that you can go and have a wonderful time, keep them that way, because once you start working there, it doesn't mean the same.
Yep. I've been interested in a little bit of the history of the state of West Virginia lately, and so I've been looking at ghost towns in West Virginia on YouTube, and abandoned cities, and the town of Thurman, who has five people in it now. The town of Old Spruce above Cassin, Grand Road, what impressive reading on the internet and stuff that you can do about that is pretty fascinating. And I was telling someone this morning, actually a prior county commissioner in Mon County, his family owns part of the town of Old Spruce now. Yeah, it's crazy, so, interesting place. Well, thank you for your time.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is Tripp Tobin, supplemental funding needs for, I'm gonna say, Martinsburg slash Legion ball field. So Tripp, we've asked you to come in, we know you're passionate about this, and tell us why it's important to improve that ball field and to continue to be able to play ball field on there more frequent than what it has been played on recently.
What, played recently?
No, more frequently. I mean, one of the reasons why you want to do it, so you can play on the ball field, right?
Yeah, I mean, this thing has, you know, a lot of tentacles to it. You know, one of the things that I wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about, American Legion baseball, so you understood real quick, and I wrote down some notes so I wouldn't get rambling, because I'm nervous, but I don't know if I'm nervous or I'm excited that when I'm back to second. But certainly, there's a passion there, but I just wanted to read this to you, the opening state of, the opening statement for American Legion baseball. American Legion baseball is a national institution, having thrived through a World War, several national tragedies, and times of great prosperity as well as great despair. The league still stands behind the traditional values which it was founded on nineteen twenty-fifth. American Legion has taught hundreds of young Americans the importance of sportsmanship, good health, and active citizenship. The program also is a promoter of equality, making teammates out of young athletes regardless of their income levels and their social standings. American Legion baseball has been and continues to be a stepping stone to manhood for millions of young men that have gone on to serve their country, their community, raise families, or play the sport at the highest level. That's one of the reasons why I chose American Legion baseball as opposed to a paying travel baseball job that I've been offered, maybe a high school coach's job where you're only around the young men a certain amount of times a year, and you're not allowed to be around them after that. But that's the reason why I chose American Legion baseball, that's why I'm very passionate about it. I believe that it gives back to the community tenfold. When you look at our program, we've had four senior teams and three junior teams since its restatement in two thousand and nineteen, it's set dead for multiple years. Hundred seventeen kids have played, ninety-three of those that were eligible or have graduated went on to participate in baseball at the collegiate level and are now, many are in their second or third year, and actually one has went on to be drafted by the MLB. And we're in the process of, because this is a multifaceted thing, and don't want to look at it as just one field, one team, or one entity, we're also in the process of, we've spoken with Kevin Knowles, Mayor Kevin Knowles, and Corey down to the city, and we're having some sad conversations there. And we're in the process of getting on that agenda, spoke with the people at the Development Authority, we're going to be there on nine-thirty on Wednesday next week, also talking about this project. You know, there's many turf baseball fields around the area that sort, you know, it's kind of an easy sell for the football field, because it serves the soccer and the lacrosse and football, and multiple entities, whereas baseball is baseball. So, you know, we can't get that wholesale buy-in, but what I think what it does is that, what it does is it helps us to, give us a permanent home for the Legion. You know, we've spoken for years, some sad conversation with you guys about a sixty-ninety field, which is a larger major league size field, which is what we play on, that only, the only eligible field for us to play on in the county is four high school fields, which are governed, their usage is governed by the high school administration and that booster club. After years of bouncing around, we found a little bit of a home with Martinsburg High School Baseball, many, mostly because we have a very, we're laser-focused on what we'd like to get done there and have the best baseball field in the state when it's all said and done. Multiple things have been done by that program, including Jumbotron scoreboards and clubhouse and the turfing of the mounds, and we already started the process of that, audio, so many things that make that place so much better, the best place to play in the area, but also the fact that that...
Tripp, how was those projects funded?
How were those projects funded? Well, the scoreboard certainly was done by the MHS boosters, and a lot of fundraising was done for that, you know, personal fundraising. Got a little bit of a hiccup here lately, of course, with COVID, but those things were funded through, you know, self-funded. Also, you, some of you guys, Jim himself, was involved in the indoor batting cage and some grant money there, things like that, but mostly it is funded through self-funding. And that's where the Legion came in and kind of attached itself with Martinsburg High School Baseball boosters and helped them continue the process of making that field the best possible field in the state.
And that's why I was getting at, a lot of that was, a lot of hardir, a lot of long hires to raise money by boosters, by yourself, by anybody else. I know you said Jim worked on it, I've worked on it back when Bill was part of Martinsburg Baseball, so it's been a community thing, it's been a community project where people involved has gotten things done.
And a lot of that, you know, you say, you know, this is a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar project with a plus or minus of thirty-five thousand, depending on increases over the next twelve to eighteen months. We're at the three eighty-five mark, if you want to bid this whole thing out. Because it's multifaceted, because I believe it can help with tourism, because when you look at Martinsburg Little League, who has now turfed their fields, and they have four or five fields down there that can hold tournaments or games from five-year-olds all the way up, you know, till they get into that high school level. And then you have the high school field there, and then you have Charlotte Prather Park, which the initiative up there is, you know, has really picked up, and they're doing a great job. But all these are inside the city limits, which if you go to a tournament these days, when we go to a tournament, and we go out to Morgantown, Bridgeport, Charleston, all those places that have really invested in to the baseball softball program, it doesn't say, you know, bring your team, it says this tournament's available from nine U to sixteen U. So when you play in those venues, you play at different areas, so you might play... So you might play a game at this park and then play a game at that park. And then the younger guys, of course, will play at a different park. But it creates a whole weekend of tourism and we have that availability or that opportunity. If, now that we have Martinsburg involved and very passionate people looking to bring people in. Now you have Charlotte Prather, who has four fields up there. And now you're looking at, you know, a field that is within half a million dollars of being no doubt the best field in the state, you know, no doubt. So what it can do is you can have a weekend of multiple entities being here. And we've seen that on July fifteenth to the twenty-first, when the state little league came into town and we filled up every restaurant, every hotel. And I believe that's something that can be done multiple weekends with, with the, with the work of passionate people in the girls softball, the Martinsburg Little League and the high school Legion program, where we put these things together and bring that into town. You know, then those people stay, they play, you know, they play into the agritourism. You know, you've got the spur of the fur hole coming through, all these things are going to play together. This is just kind of the beginning of a, of a big picture, of course. So, you know, once you do bring that money in or once you do create that and you have these leagues and these teams and the Legion and the high school boosters and Martinsburg and you have Charlotte Prather holding these tournaments, well, they make money. Well, you know, they don't keep that money, they reinvest it back into the, to the field. So it's just going to continue to get bigger and bigger. So, you know, this one-time investment, you know, could, could certainly create a situation where these teams can stand on their own feet, not that they haven't before, but they have certainly. I mean, when you look at the boosters at M H S or you look at Charlotte Prather at Martinsburg, they spend every dime, every year to get, and they start off fresh with fundraising. You know, they save back a little bit, of course. But that's a situation where it will also create revenue for those, not only just the area, but for the leagues themselves, the teams themselves to stand on their own and become better and do better as far as advertising and webpages. You get on, yeah, I've said it the last time, you get on this telephone right now and you type, you know, eighteen U tournament in West Virginia and they're going to take you to Morgantown, Charleston and Bridgeport. That's where you're going to go. That's where you're going to spend your money. We had about a thirty thousand dollar, after fundraising this year, we had about twenty-five thousand dollars from the Legion fundraising, player fees, and we spent the majority of it out of town. Stayed in Morgantown three weekends, we had to go play in Morgantown, we had to go to Bridgeport, we had to go to Wheeling, we had to go to all these areas, stay, play, eat, eighteen kids, fifteen to eighteen kids and their families, girlfriends, you name it. It was one, you know, it's just one, one group, not what we're talking about where we couple with these other groups. And because like you talked about Packhorse Ford being centrally located, even though Martinsburg's slightly north, Charlotte Prather and M H S, all these things are within the city limits. I mean, they're going to keep these people tight when we go that route. The biggest thing is though, that with the Legion baseball program not having a field, we are on a, basically on a yearly basis where the Legion baseball either does, either, and it's been, hasn't been a check written to the boosters, but it's been a contract with the booster that says, can you help us in this area, here's one, here's our to-do list, we'd like to get this accomplished. And they have, you know, a five-year plan and this could certainly expedite that plan. And that was one reason why I felt at home there, because I'm also a guy that likes to check things off my to-do list. And I'd also like to see it be the absolute best possible field in the state because I believe it's so close and they've done such a great job there. It brings in funds for the area, that area, you know, when you, when you stay and play, those hotel motel taxes go directly back to, you know, to the parks and rec, who then can continue to do better, you know, do the DuPont thing or whatever, you know, all the things that they need to do, it helps there. So because it's multifaceted, we have reached out, of course, we've reached out to the Randy Smith Foundation and different things. But we're at about three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars where we're at to put, to do that piece of the puzzle. We've all, we've secured about ten or twelve thousand dollars to put stadium seating in, hopefully before next year. M H S boosters, baseball boosters purchased over a hundred seats from Edgertown Suns. Of course, they're orange, so they fit well. So we do have to get, you have to get the pad set and all that done, engineered a little bit and get the elevated concrete so we can have stadium seating there. So we're continuing to make this thing more and more like a minor league baseball park. And that's, that's why I have, my passion has really been turned back on because of what can be done in the future, what it can do. And, you know, we're dealing with fifteen to nineteen-year-old young men who, like the creed says, we're trying to send them out, you know, make them good citizens, good sportsmen. And we're different than pay-to-play travel baseball where we're going out and just get the best guy or the girl to play. We're trying to get the best people to play. You know, we don't necessarily always have the best players in the area. They go to some U S triple A baseball team, but we have some of the best representatives of the area that play their guts out and we feel like we give them an opportunity to further their education, get some money towards that, we help them make sure they know the grades are top-notch. We get them around people that's been to college, been back, tell them this is what you have to do. And we understand their social and economic status and what's, you know, we don't try to say, hey, you should go to W V U if you're not, and you're going to create a bunch of student loans. We try to take each one individually and get them best possible scenario for their future as well. So it's not just baseball, it's so multifaceted. And I think it needs to happen. Until I leave this earth, I'm going to keep pushing forward to happen. And that's kind of what I, what I brought here for you guys today. And of course, you know, open any questions and answers, any questions I can do, you know.
Anybody have any questions for Tripp?
How much you looking at it?
Well, it's going to be about three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar project.
And what is involved in the project?
Well, the project is kind of, we have multiple bids, some are like, you know, if, you know, we can take some off if you do your own prep work. By your own prep work, that means you go into all the sod off, you bring in the gravel and the dust and you do the tamping and the leveling and that type of thing. And then we just put the, you know, we put on the turf. Of course, that involves you guys being in business long enough, when you start getting two people involved and when there's a failure, you know, who do you blame? So we'd like to, though it's a great savings, we'd like to have one person. Now, we're willing to go that route, if that's what it comes down to. But at this point, you know, I'm a floor guy, if somebody buys their own floor and I install it, then the warranty's probably not there any longer. Because I'm going to blame it on the floor, they're going to blame it on the installer and then the floor people's going to blame it on the homeowner, there's going to be no warranty. So that's one fear of, of taking the price down by doing some things ourselves. But I do believe if we get to that route, that we do have some very good people in this area that could accomplish that and get it prepped for them. But it takes off the turf, preps the field. We've already have the home plate and the mound done, so those areas are already brown and, and, you know, they don't need to be done, but the whole green area, it would be out to the outfield, so there'd be no more mowing there, multiple games could be played. One of the reasons why you go to some of these turf places to play baseball and why they're so appealing is because there's no fear of rain out. So if you pay five, six, eight hundred dollars to play in that tournament and it rains all day on Saturday, then they say, all right, you're going to play two games on Sunday, I'm sorry about your bad luck. There's no refunds. So there's always a fear of being rained out and that takes that fear away as well. And you've got, like I say, multiple entities now in the area that are turfed. But another thing is, and I said earlier, we had four senior teams and three junior teams. We didn't have a junior team this year, but we had no field. We couldn't, we've already played seventeen or eighteen games from the senior team on M H S. Other teams were playing on the other fields, couldn't secure that, even Tri Jefferson County couldn't secure that. So about eighteen or nineteen kids that are up and coming in our program did not play this year. It was heartbreaking. So that would alleviate some of that as well, where we could get a home. The other part of it is, is if you build a field, you have to maintain that field. This is a one-time investment for years and years to come and something a little one. So you don't have to mow it, you don't have to weed it, you don't have to spray, you don't have to hear from, you know, the boosters or the Legion says we need this or we need that. Still on their own for a long time, four years, gotten this far, but now they're out here.
So how long does one of these fields last once you put it in?
Well, when you look at the football fields, I think they're ten to twelve years. So we're looking at ten to twelve years. Second time through is a little cheaper because the prep work's mostly done, so you're going to turf. Something that we've looked at about in the boosters and the Legion to do a ten-year plan to try to not have to come back, where we put away X amount of dollars, guess what it may or may not cost to replace it, but have a majority of it there. So that when the field, now baseball fields tend to last a little bit longer. But that gives you more time to put away money to prepare for when it does go bad or needs to be replaced. The good thing about baseball fields is like the areas that are roughly worn and turf, you can patch. You cut it out and you patch it. The infield itself doesn't necessarily get tremendous amount of work as someone standing at second or someone standing at third or pitcher or catcher or the batter, those areas can be cut out and patched. So, you know, there's things that we can do there to, you know, for the longevity of the surface. But also certainly we have to keep in mind that it will need replaced one day, just like Martinsburg's high school football field was, was it ten or twelve years, I believe?
I was like, I think I missed it.
I think it's important that you're looking, you know, you've obviously looked into this and done your homework, you've got, you've got an idea how to sustain it for the future. And it sounds to me like you're, you're just trying to get some icing on the cake to be able to get it to the level it needs to be.
Yeah, certainly.
And it's obvious you have, of course, I've known you a long time and you obviously have passion for your community and, and a great passion for the sport, that's for sure. But I, I, I think it's, I think it's a good project. I think it's, it's good to have, to invest in a project that you can see the whole plan of how it's going to continue on and do what it needs to do, so.
I think a little, little bit to clarify your question, Jim, this is to do the infield?
Yes.
Right? Not the outfield, the outfield will stay in grass, infield. And as Tripp said, one of the things that happens is on a, a natural turf field, it just, it takes a beating, especially after a rain. So therefore there, from what I understand, is limited to some, how many games they can play on the field because the field just doesn't take that kind of abuse. Is that right?
Correct. I mean, you know, when you look at a little league grass field, you're looking at eighty-pound, ninety-pound, now we're talking at, you know, one fifty, two hundred pound men and it wears and tears on the field pretty good, especially when it's moist, you know, it's like a golf course, you get the divots and you damage it. So it needs time in between and hydro, or overseeding and things like that, fertilizing. So it's really tough to, you know, there's always this thing that used to say, you know, we should be able to play on those fields if we're a travel team because we live in a county, we pay taxes. Well, sure they do, but they don't take care of it, they don't understand to take care of it. And they don't understand why the gate's locked and, you know, because they are such a delicate, believe it or not, to keep them to the standards. And, and when you look at Martinsburg High School baseball and their head coach and what he's done over there and what he does do, the time he puts into it himself, you know, to get on that field was a strict set of rules. And a sit-down with those young men is this is how you're going to play or you're going to leave. And I said, I put all this money and time and effort into it personally, if we get kicked off, I'm not going to be very happy, you know? So they are very, very, they keep a close watch on that. One reason why, you know, I've had kids at, at Mossman, I went to Martinsburg. But because of the, the laser focus plan and, and looking down the road and because I believe that that group of coaches have the right ideas for the field, you know, that I'm be willing to put my time and effort into it as well. Because you don't get into a project that, you know, that usually anyone has passion for. And it's going to take more than me for sure to run these tournaments and take care of this field and mow that outfield and that's something that, that boosters and that, that head coach is more than willing and wanting to do.
He has done a wonderful job.
He's done a great job, yeah, he's done a great job. And, you know, it's just, it's amazing to watch the time and effort put into it.
Like the school system owns all of the other fields, but the county actually owns this field, correct?
We own it.
Yeah. So.
We have to, we have to date.
Excuse me?
The county, this county council holds the date on that project?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, I mean, that takes another little, you know, shine, you know, towards.
Which field you putting on?
Well, yeah, toward, I mean, we, we want a, we want a nice facility, you know, and, and, you know, I, I follow your baseball team, I'm not a, I'm not a big baseball fan, but I follow your, your baseball team every season, probably the last couple of seasons, watching, waiting. Somewhere I either know their dad or their granddad or something like that. So I enjoy watching them grow. And obviously you've had great success this year on one of your gentlemen that you've taken through your program is now playing Major Lake baseball.
Yeah.
So that has to be a tremendous compliment to the program and you.
And it's a big challenge to our young men as to what needs to be done to get to that level, not just come and play baseball and there's a lot to it. And I think the level of play has certainly been elevated by that young man and his, and his ability to elevate himself. You know, helps that, it just depends on you and us.
So which team is he playing for?
Cleveland Guardians.
Okay.
I can't get, I can't get used to the Cleveland Guardians.
Yeah, I can't either. I just Cleveland. Yeah. And there's many young men that went on, I mean, you know, Kyle West and Jack Raisenwebber, all these, you know, John Raisenwebber's distant, you see, going to come back and be a big contributor to this, you know, to society, been through our program, been a great mentor to our young men. And it's nice to watch the guys come through. And you can kind of pinpoint the guys that are, that are, you know, really going to get after and the other ones that you have to push a little bit. But there's some, you know, Legion baseball, we stand for the pledge and we say the, say the creed and, you know, it's about sportsmanship, the umpiring is slightly different. You know, there's not a lot of cussing, there's, it's, it's a gentleman's game per se. So I wouldn't want to tell you that, we teach a lot of manners.
That's a big thing within itself right now, Tripp. I went to some, some youth basketball game not too long ago. I was just like, who's, who's taking control of this?
Yeah.
It's, it was crazy.
And there's, when you get, when you get, here's the thing about Legion baseball too, when you get ejected from a game, you get in trouble, you yell at the umpire, you're in my second baseman. It's not, there's no rule that says you can come back. You have to go in front, it has to be presented to a state and possibly a national level to when they restate you to play. So it's not like I'm going to get, you know, ejected today because we play, you know, a bad team tomorrow, no big deal. It's not, you might not ever come back. I mean, there's no, if you act up to the, to the extent that they think that you're detrimental, then you don't come back. That coaches, players and all, it's not, not a rule, it's, I mean, it's no set date. There's no, okay, you said a bad word, come back tomorrow, or, you know, you punched an official, you're never coming back. It's, it all goes in front of a board.
That's, that's one of the things that society doesn't do a good enough job today is teach that there is consequences for your actions. And, and in every aspect of life, there's consequences for your actions. And, and it's, it's a, it's an asset to be teaching young adults that, that they have to always look at that because that's just life.
One thing that tournament baseball does too, when you bring in tournament baseball or liquor or things like that, there's always an early game or two early games. And if you stay up all night, he's going to pay the price. And, you know, our team did that a few times and they paid the price. So when you get these guys up at seven, eight o'clock to get ready for a baseball game, they have to understand that Friday night before Saturday night's game is very important. And not that they don't know that because of school and all, but when they fail in front of their friends at a sport that they think they're really good at, it hurts them, it hurts them bad. And then, and they learn lessons quickly with that. The game of failure, let them fail. We don't do a lot of pitch calling, we don't do a tremendous amount of, of that type of thing. We kind of let them go until the kind of game's on the line later. But there's certainly a lot of life lessons and Sam Walls, John Lowry Jr.'s been with us, all those guys that play at the highest level, know what it takes to get those kids there. Quiet mentors, have kids into their homes, into their own batting cages and things on time. So tremendous support staff there and great to have those guys around. Great to have those contacts when a young man wants to play college, you know, John Raisenwebber, Jack Raisenwebber ended up at University of Charleston a lot because John Lowry Jr., you know, made a phone call. So when you have those guys involved in supporting these guys and they see, it's one thing to say, hey, you know, tell the guy down in Shepherd, hey, you need, you need this guy, he's really good. If you're just saying it because you like the kid, because if he's not very good, they won't believe you the next time. So the kid, we tell them, if you don't show it to us, we're not going to lie, we're going to give you all we got. But I can't go tell University of Charleston that you're a good fit for them when you're not. So you have to sell it to me first before you want us to sell it, you know, early down. Because everyone thinks that if you play for a team or you pay a couple of dollars to play for a team, then I'm supposed to get you in college. We'll get you in college is what you do on the field and, and then, and then word of mouth. And, you know, and those types of things, how you react to failure. So it's a different game than just winning, there's a lot involved in it. And that's why I got passionate with American Legion, got passionate with M H S boosters because of what they want to do, it's in the city limits, it fits. It, it, it's just a great, I think it can be a great asset and can be done because the council has some, some ownership to the field. I believe that, you know, opens up some avenues to possibly funding as well. And then Development Authority is going to hear our pitch about what happened on July fifteenth to the twenty-first, how we, how baseball filled the seats and filled the restaurants and things next Wednesday. From there, we'll get on the line and speak with Mayor Knowles and Corey Roman and those people down in the city. But we'll continue down that road and, until we can. But we're looking for a quality of life for the young men, of course, that you guys create. And that's something that Legion baseball does differently than just your local travel baseball where you're trying to win. differently than just your local travel baseball, where you're trying to win tournaments and, and get on Facebook and say we beat the outlaws. You know, we want to say that we sent ninety percent of our kids to college and hopefully along the way we can bring back a few banners. But ultimately, the goal certainly is to mentor some fifteen to twenty year old men into good citizens.
Okay. What, what, what are the dates on your season? I know they were earlier. Your dates of your season, when?
Well, we can start the moment that high school ends.
Okay.
So a young man can't, will participate, even with his college or his high school. So last year, actually Jefferson lost on Saturday, we play on Sunday.
Okay.
So I think it was July second or third, and our final game was August, I believe. So it's a, it's a quick, we played forty, we played thirty some games in less than fifty days, many times double headers, three, four, five games on a weekend.
Right, right.
Another thing that it does too is these, these young men, if they don't have the Legion program, they have to go to the Richmond Braves or they have to go to, you know, some, some US AAA baseball team, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, two thousand dollars. Our parents on our teams that were telling us that last year they were making payments to their team, two hundred dollars at Christmas, two hundred dollars, two hundred dollars. We're trying to keep this thing as low as possible because we want to stick to the creed that says this is not any, baseball is not gonna be about your social status or your economic, you know, standings or where you stand. I mean, we're gonna take in every child that's capable of playing and we think can move it, go to the next level. And, and, and we have tryouts. I mean, it hurt, but we have tryouts. You don't just, because you, because you got two thousand dollars, only you can make the team. And because you have nothing doesn't mean you make the team because we feel sorry for you. I mean, it's still a, it's still a, it's not a pay to play. It's a show up and give us all you got to play.
Earn to play.
It's an earn to play place. But again, we do make cuts. And if that cut is someone who's willing to pay double, too bad, we're not, that's not the route we go. This was the most we ever charged this year because we had a lot of bills to pay for these new uniforms. We were on some road trips and we spent five weekends away. We'd really like to think that we could play here. When you look at Morgantown Legion's schedule, look it up, they never leave home. They never leave home. They played one game away out of thirty some games, never left home. Two thousand twenty-three, our area, which is four teams, has the opportunity to host the American Legion State Tournament. And we have to bid for it, of course. And we have to, you know, put a presentation on, but I believe our field would guarantee that. I could present it.
Yeah, and I guess that if you don't, a turf field, it almost have to be done this year.
Well, we're gonna work on it.
Because baseball would start up early next year.
Well, baseball starts in March.
Right.
So if you miss March, then you, then you're back, then you're all the way to next fall. So does year. And we have to worry about, I mean, the, the bids won't be good then, but that's why I kind of said, hey, put a ten percent on it. Might be more, but figure it out.
Yeah. Anybody have any more questions? We're gonna be talking about funding later today. Anybody?
Your funding discussion's next week.
Next week, I'm sorry.
Your workshop.
Okay, all right. So we'll be talking about it next week?
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Trip.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trip.
All right. Next on agenda is Matthew Olmstad, Director of Policy and Strategic Planning, First Responder, Public Engagement Recruitment, Video Services. Good morning, Matt.
Morning. I have a handout here.
Okay.
If you'll recall, several weeks ago, the sheriff appeared before the council to talk about law enforcement, lives, transparency, promoting what our sheriff's department does. Matt and I met after that and, you know, we have more public safety agencies than just the sheriff's department. We have, you know, Berkeley Fire, which is the only county fire department in the, in the state, and we have our nine one one center and the offices of emergency management. So Matt came up with an idea, just from the council's consideration today, you know, action certainly is being requested of, you know, how we may, you know, address the needs of all of our public safety agencies.
Basically, first of all, good, good morning to everybody. And thanks for making some time for this very, what I do to be as a long time and old life, that's twenty years of working in journals and public relations. I can tell you, there is, there's one great chance of making a great first impression. And public relations is, is part of that. And you can do video, you could do with no messages, no graphics. You see the campaign ads every, every fall, every election, where they throw the stats on, on the screen while they're playing the visual images, you know, they're trying to get you to vote for, you know, a pro, pro police candidate. So they're gonna show crime stats. They're gonna show, you know, images of law enforcement doing the right thing, you know? But they're gonna show a blending of not just video. They're gonna show graphics. They're gonna show something that captures your attention. That's a real, true, professionally done, uh, video product. It's not just editing of, of different, uh, video camera images. So essentially, that is really what I'm envisioning for all the different first responders. There is enormous opportunities in the annual calendar of celebration of different recognitions of the various law enforcement, first responder agencies, where you can tie those recognitions into the positive things that each of these agencies are doing. You can also focus your messaging to, to certain topics, to bring about more educational awareness about speeding on the interstate, DUI. You can demonstrate various tools that the various law enforcement agencies are using, you know, promote gun safety. You can do all kinds of different, really meaningful educational, uh, video products. But it takes talent. It takes a lot of skill. It takes good content. You have good video, powerful images. We had a guy, I, I don't want to name firms in the community, but there's one that you all probably have seen, the work done recently for Main Street Martinsburg. They've done some really good, effective video promotions of downtown with graphics and images. And they've had some really successful, really successful events. And I would argue that when you do good video, good PR video, you're gonna get bigger turnout. And I have a very strong belief that that has really helped Main Street promote their activities. And that's just a very positive thing. But you can incorporate that same strategy with promoting what Berkeley County is doing.
I relate that to modern day photography on marketing a home for sale.
Right.
It used to be you'd take your own photos that looked like crap.
Right.
Wide and wide angle.
Right.
Now, every home that's on the market, more than likely, has a professional photographer come in and do the photography and drone shots.
Right.
Right?
Right.
That's what you're talking about.
It's a blending of all the different elements. You could have still photography blended with video. You can, you can blend some body camera imagery that's very carefully narrowly, you know, focused on a certain thing with, with regular video that is more stationary, more, more, more steady in, in appearance and how you view it. But it requires, you know, careful editing, very calculated messaging. You know, I, I did some videos back in the day in my previous life, they were not very good. Okay? I'm not even gonna deny that, that, you know, somehow they were worthy of, of, you know, being up in lights because they weren't.
Well, I think they weren't Oscar worthy.
They weren't Oscar worthy. Thank you.
I think that what you're asking here for today, today is a direction to put an RFP out.
Just the consensus from the council for us, and Matt's already started developing the RFP, put the RFP on the street, see what we can find.
Okay, all right. And you say this is tied in with a grant as well or not?
Yeah.
This is to actually promote?
Correct.
Okay. So anybody have any difficulties of, of putting a, an RFP out for the video and, and photography work? See what, what comes back?
I, I could almost see the, the videography being seasonal promotions where, you know, you're gonna have the winter season, spring season, apple harvest, things like that.
I mean, yes. And I'll point to the second page there, bottom of the, bottom of the page, there's a calendar of just things that go on next year, on the calendar of various recognitions. And it obviously goes throughout the year. We don't have to follow those. We don't have to tag onto those. But if you.
I'm sure there's more.
There are others. I'm sure there are others. And, you know, yes, we do want to pluck the heartstrings and we do want to tickle and entertain, but we also want to educate and inform in a very responsible manner. And we can do it. There's no question we can do it. It's a matter of, of doing it professionally. As I, as I mentioned, a liability shield, you know, having done libel and slander and, and try to avoid lawsuits and know all about media law and ethics and, and keeping us out of lawsuits, I'm well aware of the boundaries and permissions you need to have from people for putting their image or their face on, on video. I studied media law. I know all about it. And I can tell you right now, I wouldn't let anything go out without review carefully, obviously by all the parties involved. And it would be done very professionally. I can assure you that.
I see opportunities to showcase what, what these, what our employees do almost every day, you know, from water rescue to hazmat. A lot of folks have no idea who, who does that. Because it is a small group of people that have a specialized training. But I also see it as an opportunity to recruit folks who think, man, that's pretty cool, you know?
You can present it in a very cool way without say, without saying come apply.
Yeah.
You can present a video about just demonstrating whatever it is, whether it's gun safety or it's, you know, you guy, you show the, the sheriff's deputy dressed, all equipped with all the equipment, you know, the SWAT team, you show them just demonstrating something that they do. That looks, and you do that video in a very professional, well-done manner, that's gonna appeal to what he's talking about, recruiting people.
And that's, and one of the things that we keep forgetting when we do this stuff is, is I'd like to be able to try to do recruitment at a young age, you know, beginning of high school or maybe middle school, to send those out. Because that's when you actually start to focus and some of us start to focus on what career path we want to take, you know? It's, old days, I'm probably still do it. You used to have Career Day. Different people would come in and stuff like that. So.
Right.
I think that, you know, not only the adult population, but also youth.
Yeah, the messaging, the, the style of video that would be done to, to target that audience. Absolutely. Yeah.
And the, to also be able to include the volunteers, whether it be police reserve volunteers for the sheriff's office or volunteer firefighters, where this person does have an interest, but they have an opportunity to get their training and serve their community. And then perhaps if they chose to do it as a career. I think there's some opportunities there.
All right, Matt, it sounds like that we want to move forward with the RFP and see, see, see how it comes back.
Okay, great. I just want to add one quick endorsement of American Legion. I was not a very good ball player, but they, they did select me for Boise State. And I went out to Jacksonville when I was in high school. It was cool.
Swing for the fence, did you?
Yep. I was in the Wright Field and Little League and Springfield Cubs. And I was picking more flowers and daisies and dandelions.
Wright Field's not a popular place.
No, there was no, there was no action there. There wasn't even any dandelions to pick. But I, yeah, I was picking the grass. I didn't do anything else. But Boise State was an excellent program and it's, and American Legion, I owe them a better gratitude.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait a second. Hold on, Matt.
I did have one. First, I just wanted to say I went to girls' state this summer, so I definitely relate to the love of the American Legion, Legion auxiliary. I was wondering what platform you would use to release the videos or pictures and how specifically you would get that to just like people my age or, because I don't think the target audience is just the people of Martinsburg. I think it sounds like we're wanting to get new hires. So how would that reach my demographic?
We do have a, we do have a YouTube channel for the county. We also have social media platforms as well that we use. I, I feel like our website as well would be, would be an obvious platform. Threading the needle to get those videos targeted for your demographic through the, uh, school board, Board of Education, and getting approval to possibly distribute, distribute those videos to the schools via, I don't know if you still have the television production, that opportunity, sure. It could absolutely be explored. But to thread that needle, to get that approval, to get those videos distributed to the schools directly, ideally, I think that would be great. That's a very good question. I appreciate that. Anything else?
No.
I appreciate your question as well.
Yes, indeed.
That's something most of us don't think about, but thank you for thinking about that.
Did you say you were gonna get an attorney? Is that what I heard?
It's the plan.
Okay. Very good. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is Allen Davis, County Administrator, Omega Contract Renewal. Mr. Davis?
Sir?
Luke.
Yeah, I'm gonna recuse myself from this conversation due to my, my company having dealings with, with some of the employees from Omega.
Okay, all right.
Don't go forward. I will. Just the purpose of, today is just to get some direction from the council. As you know, we have a contract with Omega to provide lobbying and legislative services. The first year of the contract expires November thirty of twenty twenty-one. Last year about this time, the council decided in cooperation with Omega to extend it for one additional year at the same, with the same terms as, as the very first contract through November thirtieth, twenty, of twenty twenty-two. So we actually have three options. We can depend entirely on West Virginia Association of Counties and County Commissioners Association of West Virginia to represent the county council's interest with no independent lobbying and legislative, with no independent lobbying legislative agent. For all intent purposes, we would let the, the current contract expire. We would not renew it for the second out year. We could, if you just, if you so choose, we could put our legislative and lobbying services out to bid to see if there's any other interested agents out there that would like to have the county business. Or you can extend Omega's contract for the second and, and final one-year extension, which would extend the contract through November thirty of twenty twenty-three. I've not had any discussion with Omega, operating under the assumption that they would extend the contract for one additional year at the, at their current level of charges, which is a hundred and ninety-two thousand for, for their basic charges and forty-eight thousand, up to forty-eight thousand dollars for expenses. The current contract is, is capped at two hundred and forty thousand per contract year. So just some direction from the council, what you want to do.
Do you have any clue as to what services they have supplied to us up to this point? How value of their services?
Well, I've put, for your reference, I've put their most recent annual report to the council, which shows what they've been able to accomplish the past two years and what they hope to pursue further in the twenty twenty-three legislative session.
I think, has Omega brought back more money than they've cost us?
Yeah.
I don't have, I don't have, I don't have it on paper, but I, I'm definitely sure that it has paid larger dividends.
Because that's really what we have to look at.
Sure, sure. But even some of those, there is no savings.
No.
At the time that they're passed. One, a prime example is solid waste authority on their tipping fees. Phased in over three years. Well, let's go it this way. And I think Omega was helping on this. I may be wrong. I know Delegate Harding had a lot to do with it, but, you know, the. And Delegate Harding had a lot to do with it, but, you know, the transfer fee coming back more aggressively or, or getting a third back from the state. We know that's happened over the last couple of years. We know the tipping fee, which is going to be here soon, $120,000 a year for pretty much there, every year thereafter. We know that done the, the referendum for fire, paid to, for the fire fee, I'd say, rather than going around trying to get eight thousand some petitions or petition signed with eight thousand some voters.
Minimum.
I think it's more than that, I think it's 30% of the registered voters that voted in the last election, if I'm not mistaken. So now you can do it in one day, you'll know on one election whether they're trying to spread that thing out for a year. So there's a lot of things like that.
They were, they did represent us last year in kind of in the eleventh hour when we were, when we were desperately wanting the regional jail bill for the
Exactly.
freeze put into place.
Frozen.
You know, we all would like to be in Charleston during legislative session, but because of budget, it's difficult for us, difficult for us to be there.
Right. Very difficult.
Well, the options that you've laid out, Mr. Davis. You know, I, I will readily admit that early in I've, was, I would not have been 100% on board with hiring a lobbying firm. But because it is five and a half hours away, we cannot be there. You know, even though a couple of us would like to go down at different times during the session to have those conversations, it is critically important to Berkeley County that we do have somebody in the state house during the session. I, I don't have total confidence in the two associations to take, look at us particularly as we, they have 55 counties to look out for. Whereas with a lobbyist, they're going to look out for your interest basically only. But I still have a problem with the amount of money that, that we pay Omega. And I saw firsthand their performance in Charleston. And they handled Berkeley County as well as anybody, I think, possibly could ever ask for. Their professionalism, their knowledge, their abilities to get us in front of the people that we needed to get in front of. It, I was extremely satisfied with their service. I am not satisfied with their dollar amount. So my suggestion and my hope is that we would agree to put this service out for bid in hoping that Omega can sharpen their pencils. Or if not, then we get other opportunities.
Well, first of all, let's start off as an RFQ, wouldn't be an RFP, I wouldn't do.
Well, last time we put it out as an RFP.
Did you?
Yes, sir. And we had three reasons.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure, this isn't the third, this wouldn't be the third year?
Well, this is the third.
That's what I thought.
But the contract was for one, and we always have the option to extend it for two out years.
Two more, okay.
So last year was the first of the two out years. This year would be the second of two out years. But we're not under any obligation to extend it for those out years.
Well, I just remember we did have other people bid the job, but we felt like Omega was the best qualified to do the job.
That was the opinion.
And I felt like that was the best value at the end of the day.
And they were not the lowest.
That's exactly right.
And one other thing, Mr. President, is two months ago, during the interim session on a Sunday, we get almost an emergency notification of the personal property tax bill that was being crafted at that time. And had we not had somebody there, we would not have been part of that conversation. And we, we were able to do that through a lobbyist.
And I think, I think the big thing too is, is that one of the things that you're, you're building these relationships, you know, you just don't go down there and you, and you have, first of all, you have, some people have the relationship, but they're constantly building and building more. And the other thing that I see that's happening with, on this is, at first, I think our local delegation frowned upon it, but I think that, I think that it's a, it's a nice tool for them to even have. Because we all know when they're down there and they're in the middle of session, they're going 200 mile an hour. And they'll tell you that. And Jim, to, to answer your question, like Mr. Davis said, extending the regional jail per DM freeze was passed, mental hygiene evaluation, hearing delays, that made some traction in the past. Clarifying home confinement offers renewed, that was important to Timsaya. That passed, modifying the number of mattresses per county, we know that that needed to happen. The mass transit bill, which we know that that was in jeopardy for our transit authority and infrastructure funding, which is, we're, we're seeing signs of that today. All right? Almost $6 million.
Just as a follow-up to that, we did get an email from Jim that the Pike Side Water mains did pass yesterday.
Yeah, I got it from, I got it from Jim and Jimbo. So those are some of the things that, that, that happened because of, because of what we have, and I agree with you. It's not, no disrespect to the associations that we're members of at the state of West Virginia, but they're representing all 55 counties. Omega is representing Berkeley County, and that's pretty neat. So it's sort of like every, another thing we, we do in the county, you know?
Yeah, I, like I say, you would, you will not hear me say one bad word about them because I think they're, I think they're absolutely top-notch. My, my only point, and I made it last year and I'll make it again this year, it's, it's the amount of money. I just think that's a tremendous amount of money.
Well, what's everybody want to do? They want to, you got three options. You renew the contract with Omega as is, you turn back around, put it out the bid, or I guess you can always go back and negotiate with Omega. I don't think that would be out of question.
We could.
And I think the first thing you would do, you go back and negotiate. Ask them, you know?
And typically what we would do is if the council is interested, we would send them notice that they do have the, the second of the two out years and ask them to come in and meet with us, talk about their fee structure.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I don't think that's a problem.
I think we need to keep it on a tight timeline in case we can't.
You do.
If we can renegotiate this in a positive manner, at least for me, that we have an opportunity to bid it out before the session begins.
Completely into it at this point.
Yeah.
And they may be providing services in a, in a, for a dollar amount, maybe some things we don't need. And it just, I, I thought about this, you know, yesterday. A Cadillac rides really, really nice. And it does a, a very good job of getting you from place to place. But I may not be able to afford a Cadillac. So I, I wonder, a couple of years old perhaps? Or I go down to Chevrolet maybe? I'm just trying to put it in easier terms, my brain knows.
Well, I think, I think the, the biggest thing I would forewarn you on is you got to look at the value, right? You got to look at the rate of return on your investment. And what I mean by that, you could get somebody, I could use, I could use some different manufacturers in this discussion, but I won't. But you can
No, I understand you.
You know, we, we, we got to, there, we got to be careful because you can spend half the money and get zero results. And at the end of the day, you would have been able to spend twice the money and got the results you got.
Well, I think it's a percentage of our total budget. You know? If we got a million-dollar budget and we spend $168,000, that's pretty significant. But if we spend $168,000 and we got a $10 million budget or $100 million budget, the percentage is getting so low that, you know, it isn't important anymore.
And again, it's, it's all about, I guess it's all about, I can, I can relate it a lot of different ways. You know, but
Yeah, I tend to look at it as a percentage of our total budget.
Eddie and I can talk about that.
I think one thing that I have a concern about, you know, not so much renegotiating, is we've garnered a lot of good traction down there. And I don't want the tires to slip.
Well, we've got all in all
And again, spending money is
We've got an aggressive bunch of delegates down there, not all of them, but some of them. And we got to keep that going.
Yeah. All right. So bring them in for discussion.
I'm here of it. Yes, sir.
And like Counselperson Go can I have said sooner?
Two weeks. So about two weeks from today, Tracy, make a note so I don't forget.
You want to see if they're available next week?
Pardon me, sir?
You want to see if they're available next week?
Well, I have a, I have a two-hour workshop on your funding, I mean, I can.
Yeah, see if they're available next week.
Okay.
Call in for it.
Back, next week, we'll see.
Or call me if it's a decision.
Yeah. All right. Mr. Davis, you have recommendation for purchase of police pursuit vehicles.
Yes, sir. If the council will recall back in March, we put out an RFP for five police interceptor pickup trucks and three mid-sized police interceptor SUVs. We awarded the contract and after the contract was awarded, we received notification from Ford that the vehicles were no longer available. So we came to the council a month or so ago and asked, and we were notified that the 2023s are now available. We just found that out within the past month. So we put the RFP back out onto the street asking for five police pursuit pickup trucks and three police pursuit mid-size SUVs. Received notification two weeks ago that the assembly line for the four interceptor pickup trucks was being shut down, that they were converting to electric and that pickup trucks were no longer available, the 2023s. So we issued an addendum and instead of requesting five pickup trucks and three mid-sized SUVs, we said, just give us eight mid-sized SUVs, which, which we did. We received notification last week that by the end of the month, the assembly line for the SUVs would be shut down and that they wouldn't be taking any more orders. So having said all that, we did open the bids last week for eight 2023 Ford police interceptor SUVs. We received actually four bids with one being a no bid. They just indicated that they appreciated the opportunity to bid, that they didn't have anything to, to submit. Ken Parsons Ford's total bid for the eight was $355,792. Eggers Town Ford's bid for all eight was $360,480. And Keystone Ford was $374,000 even. We reviewed the bids, they all met the minimum qualifications, they all offer the same vehicle. Therefore, we're recommending that the eight 2023 Ford police interceptor SUVs be purchased from Ken Parsons Ford's. That submitted the lowest responsible bid of $44,474 per vehicle for a total of $355,792.
Okay, need a motion on the recommendation for the purchase of the police pursuit vehicles?
Move to approve.
Motion been made, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Counselperson Go can I have? There's a, there's a motion on the floor and a second to accept the recommendation from Mr. Davis on the police pursuit vehicles. Do you have any, you have any
Comments?
Comments or questions?
I don't.
All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, your motion carries.
We will be buying local. It's still cheaper than state contract and they're being delivered. And of course, we will outfit them once, once we, we probably won't see them till spring.
Follow up when you're changing over.
Yeah.
They're done.
All of them are done?
Yes, sir. Yep, the last one went on the street three weeks ago. So we're, we're gearing up for the next batch. The last thing, we do have about two hours scheduled for next week to further discuss the number of projects by funding for. The only thing that I was going to add to the list for discussion next week was the council made the decision last week to at least begin the design work for a three-story addition to the Dave Report Center.
Which evidently made the journal about.
Yes, at 520 South Raleigh Street. That would increase the, the projected cost from $7 million to $10 million. So I'll revise the sheet to reflect that. Also, as Counselperson, Council President Copenhaber indicated this morning, the Water District has requested an allocation of ARPA funds for approximately $2.6 million for infrastructure. Tracy, that, that is eligible. Based on some of the earlier discussions, you currently have unrestricted fund, or you actually have remaining balance funding of $4.8 million in ARPA funding. So we will add that to, to the list. I do have the Roundhouse Authority's additional request, what the council asked me to add. I do have Legion Baseball's request on there, only for $100,000. Of course, we can discuss that more last week. If it's agreeable to the council and, and, and the, the new spreadsheet that I provided you, you ask for our current debt load for the next 10 years. I actually took an additional sheet and broke it out by, by the bond series and also the principal interest through 2045, which of course we can discuss more next week. Is there anything else that you want us to add? And Tracy will be involved in those discussions next week. Again, is there anything that, that maybe I overlooked that you, that you want to add it to the list? It's not to say that we can't add more next week. I just wanted to make sure that for all intent and purposes, we have the majority of your, of your projects. And, and this is not to say that any of these projects will be done other than the ones we've already committed to through American Rescue Plan Act and actually the general funding, coal severance committed in Comfort Funds. But as far as everything else goes, it's all a matter of discussion. And then, once we discuss those, I'd like to, I'd like to begin prioritizing those projects. And as I mentioned, we did get the, we did get the email about 11 o'clock this morning from Jim saying that the Pike Side Water mains project has been approved by the committee.
Yeah, to move forward Yeah, to move forward on funding. I think that we need to, if we do nothing else today, we need to make sure that we commit, uh, up to two point six million dollars of ARPA money toward that project. I don't think we need to do the two point six because that, the one million is for next month, but we could, we definitely need to do the one point six million.
The one point six is, um, for the Pike Side.
Right, that's the one that was moved to go forward yesterday.
Yes, sir.
And I can tell you that the state legislation, the state economic development, uh, office is looking for that to happen. So, um, and we always, we, we made that commitment back when we had the meeting with the water district here that day anyway. It was that we just go and put some ARPA money into that.
And that doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna stroke a check out of the ARPA account for one point six million. It's just all it's gonna mean, Tracy, is that we're going to earmark that and allocate it. Um, and then, once all of the other funding falls into place, then, then they can request that drawdown and then we'll make the disbursement.
Right.
I, I'd still like to, uh, a better description of exactly what part of that project. I mean, that's a pretty, the, the spreadsheet that we had with all those was a pretty broad project. So what part of that project?
I've already gotten confirmation from Jim, um, to be here at eleven o'clock next week.
Um, and just for clarification on, on my part, I was under, understanding that the Pike Side, uh, water line extension, uh, was the one million and that the plant, uh, upgrade was one point six. Is that not correct?
I don't think so. I think it's the other way around. The good thing is, even though it is, if we, if we say one point six and if it's backwards, then we've got six hundred thousand dollars still there. I mean, I mean, regardless, I mean, if you're, if the state is gonna cough up five point nine million dollars and it hinges on the one point six million, and I say on this project, I, I understand your point on, you wanna know more about the, the scope of work, but at the same time, we're not gonna lose five point nine million dollars for the funding over one point six million.
No, and Eddie and I have had that discussion to, actually, yesterday, we had that discussion about trying to, you know, the, the state has agreed to come up with, uh, up to the twenty-five million dollars worth of matching funds if we, you know, if we can come up with the matching funds. So, I mean, I'm all in agreement of going through with that project and, you know, moving forward. I'd just like to have a better description of what we're spending money on so that, um, you know, I mean, we have a conversation in Development Authority about how we're going to get water to the other side of the interstate and those type of things. And so, you know, all this plays into the same conversation, you know?
I'm just.
Yeah, you can't get water across the interstate until you get water to the interstate. No, I get it. I get it, but you also.
I think Jim, if I'm not mistaken, I think that's where it's gonna pick up the line to go down Kelly Island Road and come out towards Pike Side, right? It's the line that they've already got out to the Brickyard, I believe.
They got one out to the Brickyard. It's gotta go to Grubbs Tower.
Exactly, then it comes, uh, back out, I believe, and ties into the sixteen inch main there at P and G on Route.
Well, it's gotta come down, it's gotta come down, uh, pains forward there to get to Route eleven and then go, uh, Route eleven all the way down and it actually makes a loop down by a cornering, comes all the way around, ties back into P and G line. But there's a, there's a big circle loop there that's, that, that's, that's the big part of the problem in that area. Not only are they not getting the, uh, they're getting the flow, but they don't have that circle hooked up so that it can backfeed in from the other side when you have a large demand on one side.
Okay.
And the district.
Am I right?
Yeah, and the district wants to be sure they can get all this in without having a rate increase. Right, and my understanding was that part of it, that part of it, I thought, was the seven million dollar part. That, that from Grubbs Tower all the way down, making that loop coming around, I thought just that part was. So I'm just trying to figure out what we're talking about, um, joining on funding and how much more has to be done in order to increase pressure. Um, obviously, a tower's gotta happen and, uh, um, get to the other side of the interstate as well.
I could ask Jim to send me the spreadsheet real quick if he, if he's available.
But, uh, I'm, like I said, I'm for the project and for, you know, getting in with the state. I'd just like to, I'd like to know where, what part of that we're doing.
So it doesn't jeopardize the one point six that we're saying to do today? Okay. All right, do we need a motion now?
No, sir. I'll just add it to the list next week and we'll let, I'll let Jim know that we, we are in support and he will be here next week at eleven o'clock to discuss.
Maybe say something to Jim about, uh, emailing you that spreadsheet that he has or the presentation and then go ahead and email it out to all of us.
I can prepare that.
Right.
I mean, we've also got a conversation ongoing with, uh, um, with, uh, um, federal EPA about, um, about a, uh, a funding that's going to be available in November to help some of this hundred and twenty million dollars. So, um, you know, obviously wanna keep that thought process, you know?
Right. Anything else you need to talk about on this?
You're gonna be here next week. I was hoping for about two hours. Okay.
Okay. All right, I need a motion to go ahead to executive session for which?
Uh, personnel, economic development, and pending litigation.
Go move.
Second. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For an executive session.